Are we the only thing on there, Dr.?
You are.
Oh, you are.
You're up.
Oh, we're on.
You got it.
Do it.
Yeah, you're up. Sustainability coordinator here. We have Rachel Meyer and Tom Parrott here from Lotus Engineering Sustainability to talk about Arvada's Climate Action Sustainability Plan, specifically the greenhouse gas emissions component and the engagement opportunities. So. Welcome, Tom.
All right, welcome, Tom.
Thank you for having us today. We're very excited to talk about your greenhouse gas emissions and some of the community engagement. And that's been occurring over the last few months. So does it can't we can use this open to stand here perfectly?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. So we'll walk you through a little bit of what we're going to talk about today. A real quick introduction to greenhouse gas emissions and inventories. Over over your 2023 community emissions inventory as well as municipal operations inventory. When I talk about emissions today, I'm just talking about greenhouse gas emissions only. We'll talk about engagement today, future engagement, then we'll wrap up in Q and A. So I'll go over really quickly some greenhouse gas just overview. I know you're all very familiar with this topic, but so it's helpful just so we're all on the same page. Greenhouse gases are occurring within the atmosphere. They act like blankets. They kind of keep us at the temperature that we're at. We have too many greenhouse gases, we get warmer. Too few greenhouse gases, we get cooler. About 150 years, antipropogenic sources of greenhouse gases like fossil fuel combustion. And other activities have greatly increased amount of greenhouse gases within the atmosphere. And so that has led to a overall warming of the climate and overall warming of the globe as well. So that can lead to a lot of things like increased temperatures, but also worse weather or more severe weather, more flood prone, and in some cases even more or some storms or heavier than those storms as well. So if we decrease emissions, we can help contribute to that sort of lessening of that global warming and that climate impact effect as well. So consensus among the scientists that that global warming is happening and that's largely attributable to maniacs. Whereas so to go over in a little bit more detail what an inventory is. An inventory is a collection of all those greenhouse gas emissions. So at the community scale, it's the emissions that might be associated. Imagine if you put a wall up around our bad. Scope one emissions are all those emissions that take place within the community. When you turn on your internal combustion engine car or turn on your heater in your home, those emissions occur within your community at scope one. When you turn on the light switch and you're getting electricity in that power plant that's somewhere outside of the community, so that's needs delivered to the community. So that's a scope two emission. Scope three emissions, really just kind of round out the inventory usually associated with an activity in the community like waste. It's generated here in the community, it goes outside the community. The emissions occur outside, it's a scope three. It's somebody else's emissions, but it's somewhat attributable to your activity. It's a way to make sure we don't double count emissions, but can still give an accurate accounting of the emissions associated with the community as well.
Can you give an example of in boundary and out of boundary for wastewater and water?
Yeah, so for in boundary wastewater, if you if you might have a, some communities do have wastewater within the inner community. And so those emissions are occurring within that wall.
Okay.
Most, well, a lot of communities, you know, they think that's all, you know, somewhere else, the emissions occur outside.
We still have vacuum breakers, right? So if you have vacuum breakers, that's going to be an emission.
If the electricity associated with running, I'm sorry.
Even the piping for wastewater, if there's wastewater piping and there's a lift station, there'll be a vacuum breaker. And so you'll get some emissions in that way.
That's inbound.
Prove yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a battery. Got it.
And can you speak to consumptive based emissions? I know you had to note that that's more scope three. Can you just talk a little bit about how you are or not factoring that in?
Yes, for the community inventory, we don't have the consumption based emissions as part of the inventory. It's still sort of a nascent area, at least on the community scale emissions, because most of those emissions occur, say, when Amazon delivers a package, there's a whole bunch of other missions from where that that product was created, shipped, delivered. And so some of those consumption based emissions are a way for a community to understand, are we sort of exporting our machines to other communities? So I think within Colorado, Denver and Laramore County are probably the only two counties that have really looked at that.
Boulder.
Yes, Boulder. That's right. It is, it is not an easy approach because you usually have to look at economic data. You're usually scaling downs in self population or some other metric. It's not as accurate as some of these where, you know, imagine Excel has a meter on your home, they know how much electricity you're. But we will get into consumption mission or municipal operations, just because that data is all or you find that's you all sort of control that purchase. So really quickly, just to talk about the industrial greenhouse gases, there's three primary ones, CO2, N2O, and methane, CH4. Each one of those has a little bit different global warming potential, or they can impact the amount of warming per unit of gas. So carbon dioxide to sort of one unit, methane and N2O are per unit have much more warming potential. So one unit of methane warms the globe about almost 30 times more than one unit of CO2. So your emissions for 2023 from. In total, 815,000 metric tons of CO2E. So that CO2E, that's that that's that collection of all the different gases into one equivalent metric. Not surprising maybe is that the the primary contributor is residential building energy use. Arvada is a residential community. You don't have the tall skyscrapers of Denver. You don't maybe have as much traffic as like a boulder that's going through boulder, into boulder, out of boulder. So really residential buildings, the natural gas, the electricity, that's where most of your emissions are coming from. Not too far behind transportation. So all that on road transportation, people who are living here and working elsewhere or living here and going to work here, taking their kids, all that sort of on road transportation emissions is second. And then in third, commercial industrial building use. So those are the three primary contributors. Sort of in the smaller buckets there, waste and wastewater and industrial processes and product use. And that's largely just refrigerants. All the cooling units on the rooftops and in our backyards have a little bit of refrigerant in them. There's a small amount of leakage that occurs. And that's where that comes from.
Excuse me, I was under the assumption that transportation was being like a primary driver, greenhouse emissions, followed by secondary around agricultural waste. But this, these numbers don't seem to say that.
Really great question. And at a national scale, that is entirely true. When you look at, and you hear that a lot, people might say transportation's taken over as the number one source of emissions. At a, at a national scale, yes, I mean, all 50 states, all the traffic happening definitely contributes agriculture. On a national scale, I think it's between like 10 and 14%, but still a much bigger contributor. Arvada, there's not as much ag, you know, activity happening.
Mm hmm. So. In terms of ag, when you talk about that 10 to 14%, is that accounting for food waste in addition?
No, yeah, when you're looking at ag emissions, especially at the national scale, it really is about the fertilizer inputs, nothing from animals.
Cellulose. Right.
Some of the gas and the fuel. The food waste is actually in that waste category to me.
Okay, thank you.
Food is another, one of those consumption sources as another, you know, and then you can look at sort of that life cycle of, hey, where does the food grow? What inputs were needed to make it grow? What, how did it get to us? What did we do with it when it was here? How much had to be wasted or thrown away to get one on our table? Yeah, a whole, full, fun approach to that. So. So if you could just move the little, our little screen maybe up to the top left or yeah, bottom up too is perfect. So how are you doing compared to other communities? Couple of different ways to look at this. Per capita emissions is one. And so a low, you know, kind of like golf here, we're looking for low numbers. So per capita emissions is a good thing. Arvada is doing quite well compared to others.
Can you, can you expound on that?
Yes, I will definitely. So it's not as simple as just saying, oh, look, you know, we've arrived, look at us, we're great. Because of the way that Arvada or in communities, it's sort of the makeup of the community really dictates those emissions. Arvada is a residential community, a lot of homes, not as many larger commercial properties. So we wanted to show, well, what does that emissions look like per household? If you take the emissions per household, you're, you know, sort of, I guess, on par with everyone else, another golf analogy, look at that two and one. So you're kind of on par with everyone else. What is really, I think, critical here to understand is like, because residential emissions are your number one source, there's a great opportunity there, especially because just as of eight o'clock this morning, Dr. Cog and the state were awarded $328 million to do climate work. Most of that is in that residential sector. So getting energy efficiency in the homes, getting heat pumps in, electrification, certain charging or is that a state?
Kind of, there's building codes associated with the Dr. Cog.
But we could get some of that money then through Dr. Cog? Is that how that would work?
That is, yes, that is how, and those communities who have a plan and have sort of identified, hey, look at us, we, yes, we have identified residential emissions are one of our top areas. I mean, and I can't promise anything, but I think it makes sense. You have a plan, you can sort of demonstrate it a lot more easily than another community just says, give me the money, but I don't have a plan to do it and I don't have the data to back it up. So that's only Tom Parrott's.
Editorial. I realize the, that grant has been out for eight hours now, that news, maybe 12. So totally understand if we don't have these answers yet. Is the point of that to help municipalities do further studies and works, et cetera? Or is it to actually serve and like create funds that can act as pass-throughs so people can apply to us to get a grant to do a heat pump, et cetera?
Rachel knows most of that because she, it was, it was all her, so.
Yeah, so there are several arms to the Dr. Cog program, one of which is workforce developments. We're trying to like expand the heat pump and HVAC system workforce in the metro and really a toll-free benefit region. That's one arm. Another arm is low income household, full, like whole home electrification. So they would just apply to Dr. Cog Street and the whole thing is funded through that grant. So whole home electrification. There is regular non-low income home rebates and incentives on heat pumps and other energy, like electric appliances for your home. There are energy audit services for households to get an energy audit and help them identify, you know, what type of efficiency work they should be doing. There's also a building code cohort. So Boulder County is an example where they have a building code cohort and all of the cities are working together to understand and agree on base codes and then work together to understand, you know, maybe a certain appendices apply to Longmont versus Lafayette and then figuring out which ones to include. And then they all agree to update codes on the same cycle and have the same base code for contractors to reference. And so the, the Dr. Cog award expands that to the rest of the metro area. So that way it can be a big collaborative cohort for that. There's a lot of community engagement involved. There's a couple other arms to the program, but I think, I think there are opportunities for cities to apply for funding as well. Most of it is geared at just street residents and commercial buildings. There are some commercial building opportunities as well. But I think it's, I don't, the full details haven't been like made out yet, but those were some of the arms.
Who would be the executioner? I would Dr. Cog.
Individual grants to households?
Wow.
They done that to their households?
That's a good question.
I would imagine they will go to RP.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, yeah.
And so, so whether that's a city or, you know, another third project is open probably. And the state has funds to that. Well, we'll do some of this.
So I just wanted to return us back to my consumptive emissions point that I brought up before, because I'm a little bit familiar with Boulder's analysis. And just if you look at the first household emissions, if I'm doing apples to apples right, from what I saw on their website, that their per household emissions jumps to 38.2 when you include consumptive emissions. So there's a significant portion there. And, and it does relate to then, when you think about strategies, because you know, we've been talking about composting, for example, as a strategy, that's a huge way to reduce consumptive emissions and one way to take a bite out of that. So I just wanted to talk about how, you know, how you look at things really matters and and that is, you know, adding another lens to what you're doing when you're looking at your greenhouse inventory.
Yeah, there's upstream and downstream emissions for all these things. And in some cases, there's a lot more upstream, especially food. Just anecdotally, if there are a lot of foods out there, it takes a dozen, I don't know the exact number, but it's like 10 or so apples just to get one on your plate because so much is lost at the farm and transport at the grocery store. So identifying ways to reduce that food waste is a great way to tackle consumption emissions. So yeah, I think bottom line here is doing a, doing a community great job, more work can be done and certainly some great opportunities to take advantage of some funding and really getting your community more efficient, spending less on their home energy use as well. So I'll just leave this up really briefly because we've kind of talked a lot about this, hitting home the point on whether the energy use, obviously the natural gas and the electricity, kind of that breakout. This is a lot more detailed. Rachel, I kind of call it our artistic slide of the day. So this really just sort of shows by breakout of the major sectors, residential, commercial, transportation, subsectors, so on road gasoline compared to diesel and railways and others. I want to talk really quickly about science-based, or science-based targets for purity. This is, this is an optional topic here, but just wanted to present some of the information. Science-based targets really represent a collective effort to keep, to keep global emissions at or below a level that would keep us below 1.5. So we sort of have this carbon budget in, on the earth. If we go past that around 2030, we'll really kind of lock in some of those, the biggest impacts of climate change, kind of a, it's not, it's not doom and gloom, but we're really sort of at a point of not coming back to where we are right now. So communities have come together to say, okay, we know what the budget is. If we sort of allocate that amongst all the communities across the globe, what is our individual community's share of that science-based target? One other element to that is that some communities, especially those in Europe and US, we've emitted far more carbon than anybody else gets out there. We have more technology, we've had to access to that technology for longer. So there's a fair share component to the science-based target that says, if you're in one of those more developed countries, typically the global north, you have a higher goal to reach because you've already sort of emitted more than anyone else and you have the technology to get there quicker. So it's an ambitious target that is calculated based off your greenhouse gas emissions. It would be a 62% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2030. So taking that 815,000 down to 300,000. Again, this is, this is just informational, this is for disinformation only. But there are a lot of communities here within Colorado, certainly that are taking on the science-based target approach, not just the Denver's and Boulder's, but also Town of Eagle and Town of San Mastville, small communities with really, you know, a lot of emissions coming from visitors and they've taken this on and say, yep, we, we feel strongly that this is everywhere to go. So any questions on science-based targets?
It's just interesting to see Jefferson County, whereas on the previous slide, we saw Arvada's doing pretty well in, sorry, there we go. Arvada's doing pretty well, especially when compared to some of our neighbors. So curious what Jeff.
Right, we're 62, we have to drop 62%. I can't imagine what a county Denver shares.
So most of the science-based targets, especially in the US are between.
60 and 64.
Yeah, I think it might go down as low as 58, but yeah. So because of our development index of where we're at, to meet that target, they're all about in that same, same range. They're ambitious, they're more than 50% in terms of what the global number is. Anyway, so yeah, science-based targets, just, just for consideration. So we'll go into municipal emissions. Total municipal emissions, 8,503 metric tons of CO2E. You can imagine, just to sort of know your municipal operations, there's a lot more municipal buildings than there are fleet. And so those buildings, whether they're heated or have electricity, they contribute a lot higher percentage than transportation. Waste and refrigerants kind of again on that smaller end again, but two great opportunities, again, was transportation, stationary energy, obviously with the federal efforts, the funding now going into the state around electrification of fleets, electrification of buildings, energy efficiency, again, just great opportunities here to tap into some of those emissions reflections activities. Typically, when looking at a community and its municipal emissions, we like, I shouldn't say we like, you usually see it's about 3% or less of municipal operations compared to community. And so 1%, obviously that's, that's right, that's a window of where it typically occurs kind of on the lower end as well. When we look at consumption based emissions inventory for municipal operations, now that includes things like asphalt, the purchase of computer equipment, paper, there are other sort of consumption activities. You can see that that really kind of works, so do the other emissions. When you compare the two across, you know, stationary energy is still a big component, but it's obviously much higher when you're looking at it without the consumption based emissions inventory. Just to go into a little bit more detail, most of the consumption based emissions are sort of on the, the top to the right. So asphalt, cement, fertilizer, well to wheel, that's the upstream emissions of fuel coming from where it's produced down to the wheels of the vehicle itself, the well to wheel. And then, yeah, paper and computers have a small percentage as well. So, you know, there, I think a lot of local governments like looking at this type of data because you have that purchasing power, you can make some of those decisions on whether, you know, for computers, if it's an energy star computer versus a not energy star computer. So. And let's see. Again, just kind of that last slide without the consumption based emissions inventory, kind of looking at that building is again, natural gas, electricity, it's big. The component of that, obviously, I would, you know, there are plans for utilities for less carbon intense electricity over the next decade. So that's kind of an easy one right there. I think the electrons per kilowatt hour, or sorry, the amount of carbon per kilowatt hour will, will be reduced as well. So with that, I'll turn it over, unless there's any other questions on.
I just had one comment. I went to the Jefferson County EDC last week and one of the things that I found out is as we're growing as a county and we're getting new businesses in, which is very exciting, workforce being one of the issues. The second issue was that Excel could not meet the energy requirements for those buildings. So, which is fine. We, the wonderful thing about Colorado is we are connected to the US grid where Texas isn't. Talk about it. So we can get electricity, Excel can buy electricity off the market, put it in the grid and electrify these places. So my concern is as we grow in our economic development, that we're not pushing our emissions to other states like Montana or, or something like that. So part of that is building codes need to change and, and that type of thing. So I just want us to be, to recognize that while we may be minimizing our greenhouse gas emissions, we may be pushing them to another state. And I think that Shauna and I saw that at another presentation that we had attended. So that is kind of, I just want us to recognize that and keep, keep that be in our bonnet as we, as we celebrate what we're doing and then we look across the fence and see that we pushed that somewhere else.
Good question. So Excel doesn't happen. I know that there is a bit of a, an insurgent of those young flipper snappers coming up on Excel pill, like United Power and some of these other co-ops. Do we see them being able to grow? Are they going to be pulling from the same sources as Excel or are they going to, to actually be adding to the fuel supply here for us?
Yeah, and I'm not a resource, integrated resource, so I'm not an expert in that area, but at least most signs point to Excel and the utility recognizing the power of batteries, using, coupling those with solar energy, they're using batteries and demand response. There's a lot of other great plans that are in there, energy resource plan, other demand responses for like, for our engines, bringing a lot of energy that's produced during the day on solar, putting it into cooling units, like cooling packs and putting them into the commercial refrigeration units to cool without having to be back to grid. So I think the, the point is that Excel and other utilities sort of see where the market is going. I think they're speeding, you know, they have ample time to prepare for that eventuality of having the power of more homes, more cars. In fact, in many cases, Excel has pointed out, hey, like the idea of being able to rate base some of that car charging, because it gives them that ability to really move load from 89 hours to 90 hours, profit save costs, and again, it's a great basis as well. So.
And I think part of why United Power wanted to leave was because Tri-State was kind of hamstringing them and their ability to add more renewables to the grid. So by leaving Tri-State and you're going out on their own, they maybe have more control to be able to add more renewables to the grid. So hopefully, yeah, they're not exporting coal elsewhere, just adding renewables.
Or natural gas. So we have those issues as well. So just, just want us to be cognizant. I would encourage everybody to go online, look at what the Oneida Seven Generations Tribe is doing in, up in the Midwest. I want to say, yes, they're actually burning trash to create energy. And so it's, well, look at what they're doing with their emissions though. Look at what they're doing with their emissions. They've worked on this for a very long time. So I just encourage people.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. So I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Now, we're going to hop over to stakeholder and community engagement. This is a big part of the plan and we've got two arms to that, the stakeholder engagement and the community engagement. So we'll start with just a brief overview of our project timeline. So we're all on the same page. So in the spring, we kicked off the project. We did, as we just went over, our greenhouse gas emissions inventories. We did a gap analysis of all the plans Arvada's already put together, figured out what is currently happening, any gaps in sectors and strategies that were occurring. We looked at what your neighbors were doing and what they had in their plans to help us kind of put together some ideas for strategies and sectors to include in this plan. We tabled at the kite festival, as you can see up there, and we asked folks what they wanted to see in the plan and what they were really interested in having Arvada do in terms of climate action and sustainability. So that was the spring. So you can see by the yellow star, we are in summer. And the summer means we are doing strategy development and prioritization. And alongside that, we're doing strategy modeling for greenhouse gas reductions impacts. We just finished up tailing a taste of Arvada and Arvada on tap. So we were asking folks there to narrow in a little more on the sort of topic areas that they wanted the city to include. And, and then in the fall, we'll be developing implementation details for the strategies that are prioritized and included in the plan. So that way the city, you guys can just take that and run and know that, like, we've written out step one, two, three, four, for you guys to help implement those, those strategies. And then we'll finalize the plan. And we also have the community open house on October 16th. That's going to be over there at the Old Town Library. So we're inviting everyone to come and see the draft plan and help give us any final feedback on what they like, don't like, things we should think about. So that's, that'll be early fall and then we'll hope to finalize the, the plan by end of November. All right, starting off with stakeholder engagement. So this is the one arm as I was talking about. We have a central focus group and that's, the purpose of that is to help provide lived experience from our members to help us really include the right strategies and help us prioritize based on that lived experience, knowing what can and can't work within our data. The members represent the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, the Chamber of Commerce, the Housing Authority, private industry, others, not just general public members as well as the, the committee members. And there's five total meetings scheduled. We held the first one in June. We just had one about 10 days ago. That was our second one where we started to narrow in on strategies to model. Then we've got three more that'll run through September. Our next one is July 31st. And other stakeholder engagements. So we had information interviews at the start of the spring with city staff members to really understand, you know, what is actually happening, what isn't happening in Arvada, what would and wouldn't work in terms of strategies or policies or initiatives. That way we know that we're not putting something in the plan that can't actually happen in reality. We've been doing monthly updates to the weekly brief. So once a month, we're sending out a weekly brief to update staff on the project, tell them what engagement events are happening with the public, giving them updates on how they can participate in the process, sending them other websites and stuff to look at. So that's been happening. And then obviously presentations to city council. So we had the one back in April to kick off the plan and just give a brief overview of what, what the plan process is. We're having one now to update you on the greenhouse gas emissions inventories as well as the engagement activities and how that's going and where we're at. And then we have our final presentation of the final plan on November 18th. And we're open to having more interim meetings as needed, so you guys can keep posted on the strategies we're trying to prioritize and anything else that we want to include in the.
So for the November 18th, when you present to the, upon the final plan, is that for feedback to, for council to give feedback or is that now to give feedback? So I guess the question is, on November 18th, when you present the final plan to us, do we have thoughts that we can share with you and then you come back and give that iterative?
I think that is hopeful to adopt the final plan. So that's why we're hoping to have interim meetings if we know and then to get your feedback.
Okay, and then on the timeline that you had presented, the final plan was for November 18th, but are you having any plans to implement or follow on? Having any plans to implement or follow on kind of implementation, uh, strategy? So I feel like a lot of times we get presentations and plans and they're like, here you go, good luck. And then. Things fall to the wayside. So I guess my question is, will you be able to help follow on and make sure that we're. Forward with this plan?
Yeah. So the last focus group meeting is to really hammer out those implementation details. So that way we need you guys and they're like step. One, two, three, four for our prioritize strategies. That way those top five or ten. You know exactly what to do next and do that. Um, I think our contract only runs through November. So after that, um. We have an open door policy. So if there's something that you need to help with following up on, you know, to a certain extent, we're absolutely happy. To come back and help out with stuff. Um, but the goal with the implementation detail is really. So that we don't just give you a plan and walk away. We want to make sure you're kind of set up to just take that. So to help us really frame out this plan, we have a set of guiding principles as well as a vision statement. And these were gathered through input from the kite festival as well as our focus group. Um, so the six guiding principles we have. Our simplicity, partnership, alignment, equity, greenhouse gas emissions, and then acknowledgement and preservation. Those, so those are some common themes and feedback that we heard from the public with the kite festival as well as their input. Um, from the speak up our Vanna webpage and then the focus group helping us kind of narrow in on those specific terms. And then you can read the vision statement on the screen. That was also helped put together by focus group and then. Informed by feedback from the public to really help, help frame out what we want to be doing going forward. All right, on to the other arm. We've got public and community engagement. So our first event we had was the Arvada kite festival back in April. And some statistics from that event. So we gave out three hundred prizes for our Earth Month trivia. We had a hundred LED kits distributed. Those are those guys up there from XL Energy. Uh, we have the big post-it note in the middle where we asked folks. Uh, what does a sustainable Arvada look like to you? And so we got sixty-four responses to that. And we had other people that were. Giving, you know, like plus ones or checks to some of the responses that were already on there. And then we also posted that same question on the speak up our Vanna website. And that response got. Or that question got sixty responses on that website. And then themes that we heard from the kite festivals. Obviously, we got sixty-four individual post-it notes, but the ones that sort of. Got the most upvotes and most support include expanded waste service, meaning compost service, and then more park bins. Um, more trees and parks generally across the city, more access to parks and trails. Transportation improvements, and this is mainly targeted at transit and then sidewalks and walkability, um, solar energy programs. Affordable electricity, less development, and then better and more water conservation.
Is this in order? Uh, how, like the highest?
Yes.
Uh, how do you? How do you, um? Give us the word, um. The type of people that go up to a booth that's a Nevada sustainability or? Yeah. How do you, um, account for the bias of conservative or people that are not looking at sustainability? To give this input?
And demographics, where are they living in Arvada?
Right. So we didn't ask those specific questions, at least at the booth. I don't think we did, um, the website. Don't think so. But there was one or two events where we, because I think we discussed this at the last meeting where you did find out that. You know, it was representative of all zip codes in our, in our jurisdiction.
From the survey?
That and also maybe one of the tabling events in July, either the taste or tap.
So representative as in you had somebody from each of the group participate or representative as in it was weighted to, you know, people.
Not weighted, just representative.
So I guess my question in your public engagement is how have you reached or engaged people that might have alternative views on environment?
Right. So that's a really good question. So we've tried to tailor our public engagement to hit that sort of middle sixty percent. The ones that are kind of like in. In the middle and don't maybe, you know, participate on the far end that are like very liberal and progressive and like really interested. Versus the twenty percent that maybe. Have no interest or are very antagonistic. So we've been aiming at that middle sixty percent to really try to get as much diverse opinion as we can. Um, that's why we have the three public events and we're trying to find a fourth one, um, to table at. And trying to pick public events that we think will get the most Arvada specific residents as well as that middle sixty percent to really hit at. Um, those folks. We've got, and there's more, um. More engagement to come, but we've done obviously the questions on the website. We've done updates and postings in our Vanna report. We've done postings to the various city social media accounts to really try to get feedback. We've posted those questions also on Nextdoor. And I think that's where we're finding the most diverse opinions and some of that may be, or pushback from. Those maybe towards the other, other end of that spectrum. So we, we're really trying to have a wide of a breadth of. Engagement actions to hit that whole spectrum as best as we can. Um. Not all of it has specific demographics, right? We haven't asked for specific zip codes, although we were asking at the kite festival, are you a resident of Arvada? When we tried to make sure we were getting resident input and feedback for that. Obviously, we didn't exclude anyone if someone really wanted to give their input. Because they lived three blocks in the Wheat Ridge, but they spent time in Arvada. You know, we let them participate too, but, um. Yeah, we're really trying to hit as many different avenues to get that feedback.
Maybe I'll just add as, as data people, Rachel and I are, um, you know, I think. The public engagement, what you have, that's not going to be the one, the one thing that's going to drive you to do X, Y, or Z. Uh, I think the data in the greenhouse gas inventory points you in good directions with the public engagement, the stakeholder engagement. It helps really shape how, um, you know, where you go and how fast maybe you can go in that direction. So, um, kind of an imperfect. Uh, art more than science sometimes with public engagement, but it really does help. When you do have the data behind it to say, yeah, here's what the data are saying and here's what we've heard and piecing that together the best way.
We'll move on to our other events then. So we had recently the Taste of Arvada where we tabled that. Um, we gave people like higher level sectors and then some higher level, um. Sort of groupings of actions for them to respond to and tell us like, I really want. Water conservation and we let them dot vote on what they were really in support of. Um. Some stats related to that with fifteen hundred total event attendees between forty and fifty interactions at the booth. Um, with seventy-eight of those dots that we found on our strategies and our action areas. Then we also had half pagers with a QR code that sends people to the city's website that there's a page for the climate action and sustainability plan. Where they can find out that project timelines on there, all the different engagement events are on there. Takes you to the speak up our Vanna page where there's the questions that they can respond to and to sign up for the, the lister for the sustainability newsletter. Um, we handed out about twenty of those flyers with the webpage and the QR code on it. And then a couple of days later, we were at Arvada on tap. Um, some stats from that event, about five hundred total event attendees. I will say this was on that weekend where we had triple digits for three or four straight days. So, um, fewer attendees, but. Sort of understandable that it was, um, in the middle of the day, really, really hot. Um, we had about twenty to thirty interactions at the booth still and forty-one total dot votes. And at that one, rather than having the. The QR code half pagers, we had a reusable QR code for folks to scan, um. And take them to the website to stay up to date on that. So some emerging themes that we heard from those July events. On the four sectors you see up there, land use and urban design, water quality conservation, transportation, and then energy in a built environment are the sectors sort of. Taking the most input and the most support from the public so far. Some of those topic areas being affordable housing and walkability, um, citywide water conservation, more and better public transit. And then energy efficiency and also solar programs. Yes.
So if the number one is land use and, uh, portable housing, walkability, but two slides ago, we see that they're from kite festival that. Less development is one. Are these folks aware that that means apartments?
Yeah.
And the city, which I'm guessing is what fewer people want.
Yeah. So we, especially at Taste of Arvada and kite festival, not kite festival, round top. Very similar. Um, we had to do some explaining on some of these, like, action areas and sectors. So when we got questions on. Land use and urban design and affordability, we did explain what, what it would mean for that to happen. And get them some more feedback, um, or some more information on those action areas. So. We are hoping that means that they understand what that means.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
I know that for, um, like when we were moving to a, a, a single holler. That the sustainability did quite, committee did it quite a bit of engagement. So Randy, I'm curious if you're seeing, um. The same type of engagement that for, for this climate action plan? Or if sustainability folks did different types of engagement? And what are some of like the lessons learned or? Things maybe we should be doing differently this time or do the same from that engagement?
Shawna, you were asking about the engagement that the committee did back when we were doing single holler. Is that correct?
Yeah, because I remember you saying that. How much work the sustainability committee did to be really involved in the community to talk about this. That is a particular issue. So I feel like we have some. Background of like lessons learned, things we want to do, things we shouldn't do, and engaging the community in environmental topics.
Yeah, no, it's a great question, Shawna. I would say that a lot of the events that, that, uh, Lotus has just outlined for you. Were, you know, the same events that the committee was doing back when we did, um, single holler. Um, we. I mean, the only thing that I think that we haven't talked about that we did a lot of back then. Was we put together a like slide presentation and went out to community groups. So, you know, different volunteers in the committee. You know, said, I'm going to take Kiwanis and somebody else said, I'm going to do optimists and, you know, and so they, we divided that up and, and then also divided up. Um, neighborhood association meetings that we knew were coming up. And so we were just very active and, and that, that's a very. On the ground intensive project that requires volunteers from the committee to sign up and, and take on. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So do you think, um, with the engagement we've seen so far, and forgive me if you all already have, like. HOA groups, community groups involved as part of your outreach, but. And your opinion, Randy, like, do you think the climate action plan also warrants that much contact?
Potentially. I mean, I think that's something that we could ask if we haven't already talked about with the sustainability committee if there's.
They're heavily involved in the focus group right now. They tabled it like Earth Day this year, for example, but absolutely. Um, they represent a whole slew of neighborhoods within the jurisdictions and that stuff and much.
And they might be particularly useful to involve when we have action steps that, for instance, if there is some kind of. Program for people to get heat pumps or whatever it is, educating the populace in the places where we can't be all the time.
Nothing's more impactful than getting out like we did with the HOAs. It was. But it made a difference.
Yeah, that's right.
So is that planned for later part of the community engagement plan? When we have like action steps, is that what we're saying?
Could be. It's not on the books now, but it's, I, it sounds like it's a great idea and it's effective.
Okay. Well, that, that's something I would like to offer. I don't know what the follow-up next steps are from that observation, but I just wanted to. Make sure that we didn't lose that sort of, um, lessons learned from that project. Um, and. You know, kind of make sure it's in this. So it sounds like that could be actionable. Um, and then the other question I have about community engagement is how you know, um. You know, the information you're getting from these engagement events is statistically significant. I know other council members were asking about making sure it's diverse. Um, and, um, I think we also have a lot of know-how at the city about. Um, like when we do our community survey, having a research firm and making sure that we have it. So it's statistically significant. Data that we can make action steps on. And so I'm just wondering if. The data that's being collected in these events is being conducted in the same way, or if there's another way we can collect data that's like. You know, I think it's great to be at these events and kind of get. Um, the top things that people are talking about is kind of like getting your finger on the pulse of the community. But then I also think that. We do have survey tools available that we use. Um, and other data or perhaps the community survey data is going to be integrated with this data that's like. Quantified and statistically significant and, because, because I feel like that's another good point for me to have as a council member. If I have somebody who calls me. Who's in that fringe forty percent on one side or the other, I can say, yeah, you know. You feel this way and most Arvadans don't. But I feel like with the data from community events, I can't really say that at this point.
Yeah, that's a really good point. So we started actually in the gap analysis way back in the spring with the community survey results from the last community survey. That way we made sure to incorporate that feedback into our initial strategy and sector development. Um, we've been tracking as we've gone through these events. So you could see some of the stats up there of the engagement and the people who dot voted. Gave us a post-it note. Um, in a couple of slides, I've got some more stats on online engagement. So the questions, we've got. Um, we cross-posted, as I mentioned, the questions on all of the city's social pages as well as Nextdoor. And Nextdoor is where we've gotten over fourteen thousand impressions and, um, feedback from people. Um, so I know we haven't, and we're not at the end yet to say like, this was statistically significant, um. But we're trying to keep track of all of that information to be able to say, you know, we're really working to hit every, every corner of Arvada. And all of the residents, um, and hitting their feedback. So I know that's not a very specific answer, but we're trying, trying to keep as many statistics as we can.
To, to build off of that, um, when is our next community survey going out?
I think it's November.
November, so it's soon.
Working on, I'm not, yeah, I mean, we start working on it. It's typically fall.
Okay. Well, I, I would like to see if there's, and maybe you're already thinking this, if there's a question or two that comes out of this that we want to put on that survey. I have to say I was not happy with the sustainability questions we had on the last server. They were, they seemed to be rather obscure. Talking about parks and, you know, energy conservation and mixing them together. And I just found that to be rather confusing for someone taking the survey. So I, I would hope that maybe we can get kind of fine tune that through this process and, and help play right into the next community survey before it's, you know. Underway that have some questions, I think, that to get to Shawna's point of how we might be able to collect some more good data. Um, and help us with this process.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. And we initially tossed around, you know. Putting those questions in the survey and then incorporating that response into the, the plan. But since it goes out in the fall, you know. The timeline didn't quite work out, but I think that's a really good idea to keep the momentum going after the plan is finalized and adopted and. That way it's at the front of people's minds.
If I could just add like two things. One, you know, I, I don't disagree. And I think the intent around the community survey last time was just that, as we shared when we brought it. So now that we're further along, we can do that. Have speak up our Vanna as well as another, if there's things you want to drill on to determine what goes into the, um. Survey. And then the other piece, one of the things, and you'll remember this, Council Member Warren, is. From those meetings, we learned, learned the myths and legends. So we knew what to focus on in our communications, because there was a lot of false narrative out there. So it really helped us with that communication plan. So when we meet with folks and. This is new and you think about our demographics, there's going to be a lot of educating. So there's a lot of, I don't know, false narratives out there. So we'll, we'll.
Yeah.
Help as well.
Definitely.
Thanks for answering my questions. That's all I have for now.
Great. So we'll keep on moving. So I've highlighted some of this already, but here are some of the additional avenues we've been using for public engagement. So the webpages I've mentioned that the QR code leads you to, um, it's on Arvada's city website. We have the speak up our Vanna website that we've been continually posting questions and we'll have a new one in a couple of weeks. That's going to go up. Um, we have now the Sustainable Arvada List Serve. So a monthly newsletter goes out to folks who have signed up to receive. The newsletter and keep up to date on the progress of the plan. Uh, we've engaged with neighbors connected. We did that back in the spring. Um, and then, as I mentioned earlier, the community open house, October sixteenth over at the Old Town Library to get some of that final. Feedback from the community.
Um, I, I have another question. Is there a way we can add something about this? Um, I, I have another question. Is there a way we can add something about this to people's utility bills?
Yeah, we have a letter, Shauna, that goes out inside the utility bill, and so we have the ability to control that content and what goes into that letter.
Is stuff about the climate plan, like, hey, here's how you can save money on utilities, or what's the best way? I mean, is that already in there?
No, I don't think.
We do have to spend our battery, of course. The only problem, I think, with the utility was that it doesn't necessarily go to all the people who have HOAs, because then it's. Yeah, is that, yeah, it's, it's, it's the idea of coming at it from all fronts. You get, for instance, I don't read the letter in my utility bill ever, um, but I'm a millennial. Some people do. So that's, again, those people who read the letter in the utility bill are not near as likely to be on social media, so.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's my point too, cuz I, I honestly, I think most of the people who are against the single hauler are gonna be against this climate plan stuff. And I also feel like they're the people who excruciatingly examine your utility bill for how much trash is costing them this month. So I just think it's a way to reach that demographic that I feel is probably gonna be the most oppositional, but I still want them to be included in our community assessment.
No, I like that, Shauna. Yeah, it's, it's a bit of the all of the above, but that's a good tool we can use.
And then just some other quick mention, so I said our city's, uh, social pages, so Facebook, X, Instagram. Been posting to all of those. Um, Nextdoor, here's the, uh, an image of the first post, the what does a sustainable Urbana look like to you? That's how you can see some of those, um, pushback comments that we've been getting. So kind of did get quite the spectrum, and that at least tells you sort of the neighborhood that they're from. So we can kind of verify that we've gotten a cross-section of ideally the whole. Um, and then this post specifically received over fourteen thousand impressions, just that first post. So, uh, we're hopeful that this is reaching a wide, wide part of the community. The average post, Sean said, is between three to four thousand, so that one got a lot of hits. Um, and then we've got our e-newsletter, the Urbana News. Um, also, as Marleney mentioned, we've had some posts in the Urbana Report, which I know goes out to every Urbana resident. I get the Urbana Report in my mailbox. Um, so we've got our next one going up in October, November's issue to provide updates on both the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, since we want you guys to be the first ones to see it. And then also, um, post about the open house. It's not going forward. I think that's my last slide. So any, any question?
So just to review quickly, next steps with us then, what does that look like?
At the moment, we've got the final plan presentation in November, but we're open to having more of these, um, sessions.
We, we could promote the open house to get people.
Yeah, but only can.
And once the strategy is remodeled, there's talk of having another study. Yes, and that should be by end of.
I think we would like one for a draft, right?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Before final adoption.
That way, we can speak intelligently when people ask.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, we can, yeah, I, I hate learning.
Me too.
Awesome. Yeah, we'll work with Nalini, Nalini to get those set up.
Great. Thank you, team.
Thank you so much.